Recording in progress. Good morning. I would like to call to order the Planning Commission hearing of May 2, 2024. Secretary Luz, please take a roll call.
Good morning. Commissioner Boydston?
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin?
Here.
Commissioner McPhail?
Here.
Vice Chair Kessley?
Here.
Chair Garcia?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to start our hearing today with an introduction of our and a reminder of our interpreter service. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone. We have interpreting services directly to Spanish to those that desire can please select the interpretation option on Zoom, pressing star six, and then you can turn on your mic with the number nine. Tenemos servicios de interpretación al español de manera directa. Aquellos que lo deseen en Zoom pueden presionar estrella seis y luego cuando tengan la palabra, presionar el número nueve para encender su micrófono. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Next item is public comments. Secretary Luz, did we receive any comments for items not included on this agenda?
Chair Garcia, we don't have any public comments for today.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the minutes for April 4, 2024. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner McPhail? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Boydston. Secretary Luz, please take the roll call.
Commissioner Boydston?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandlin?
Yes.
Commissioner McPhail?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kessley?
Abstained.
Chair Garcia?
Yes. The motion passes with four votes and one abstention. Our next item is item 6A. This is case number PL 23-0033, applicant County of Ventura. Project description: Public hearing to consider county-initiated amendments to the Ventura County General Plan land use and community character element and the Ventura County General Plan background report to include additional designated disadvantaged communities, DDCs. Good morning. Case Planner Jessica Nguyen, please proceed with your presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Chair Garcia. My name is Jessica Nguyen. I'm a senior planner with the Ventura County Planning Division, and I will be presenting an overview of the county-initiated amendments to the general plan land use element and the general plan background report to include additional designated disadvantaged communities in the unincorporated Ventura County. I first want to correct a mistake on this slide. It has an incorrect case number. The correct case number is PL 23-0033. For members of the public who are participating remotely and wish to speak on this item, please press the raise hand button on Zoom, and you will be connected at the appropriate time when it is your turn to speak. If participating by telephone, please press star and then nine to be queued to speak. We will begin the presentation with some project background, then a summary of the proposed amendments and public engagement conducted for the amendments. Then we will end with project findings and recommended actions for your commission to consider. We will start with the project background. The general plan defines designated disadvantaged communities, abbreviated DDCs, as areas that experience environmental pollution and related health issues more than all other areas in the state, as well as low-income areas with median household incomes at or below eighty percent of the statewide median income. The general plan also includes Program LUQ, which requires the county to conduct research on the unincorporated areas in Ventura, Santa Paula, and Oxnard to determine whether there are additional disadvantaged communities. Staff completed a study under this program and presented it to your commission last October and then to the board in December, which led to the proposed amendments that I am presenting to you today. In addition, the general plan's background report contains supporting technical information and baseline conditions for the general plan, including information about state regulations on identifying disadvantaged communities and the county's work to identify such communities. The general plan currently identifies the unincorporated areas of Piru, Saticoy, and El Rio del Norte, including Nylund Acres, as DDCs. Under Program LUQ, staff completed a study that explored options to identify additional disadvantaged communities in the unincorporated areas of Ventura, Santa Paula, and Oxnard using data from the county and state, as well as the United States Census Bureau. Community input on the study was collected in March of last year. In consideration of community input, staff presented the study to your commission last October, in which your commission recommended that the board consider option three with a modification to include the farmworker housing at Limonera Company Headquarters on Cummings Road and to consider buffer areas to be evaluated as a potential future tool to implement DDC goals, policies, and programs in the general plan. Shortly after presenting to your commission, the Board Office District One received a public comment requesting that homes in the Ortonville neighborhood on North Ventura Avenue be included in option three. Staff presented your recommendations with the inclusion of Ortonville to the board in December. The board further modified option three to exclude the Valley Vista neighborhood along North Ventura Avenue after considering public comments at the meeting that indicated the neighborhood experiences minimal environmental pollution because it is located away from the industrial activities along the avenue. In addition, the board limited the designations of farmworker housing to the dwellings themselves, not the entire lot on which they are located. I will walk you through each of the DDCs that the board designated in the next few slides. Starting with the Ventura Avenue area, staff presented the proposed designations highlighted in yellow on the screen to the board. The board directed staff to include the Valley Vista neighborhood and include only the neighborhoods shown here. Thus, the proposed Ventura Avenue DDC will include the Magnolia Mobile Home Park, La Stancina's Mobile Home Park, the residential neighborhood just north of those mobile homes, and the homes in the Ortonville neighborhood. The DDC of its existing industrial and oil and gas operations, including the Pepsi bottling factory, automotive storage facilities, and oil extraction wells. This is the Oxnard Plain area. Staff presented the proposed designations highlighted in yellow on the screen to the board, including this property, which contains farmworker housing. However, as I stated earlier, the board limited the designations of farmworker housing to the dwellings themselves, not the entire lot on which they are located. Thus, within the proposed Oxnard Plain DDC, staff reduced the designation boundary of this farmworker housing property to only cover the farmworker housing units, not the entire lot. In addition, this DDC will include the remaining areas highlighted in yellow, which encompass Glenview Mobile Home Park, Country Sunshine Mobile Home Park and Abutting Residences, Naval Air Mobile Home Park, and Laguna Vista Elementary, all of which are located among agricultural fields and operations. Within the Santa Paula unincorporated DDC, staff also reduced the DDC boundaries to cover farmworker housing units instead of the entire lots. This DDC will include farmworker housing units in Aliso Canyon, Wheeler Canyon, and farmworker housing units at the Limonera Company Headquarters on Cummings Road, Olive Land School, Briggs School, and Santa Clara Elementary, the West Santa Paula Existing Community, North Santa Paula Existing Community, and the neighborhood along South Mountain Road. Staff has initiated amendments to the general plan in order to incorporate the additional DDCs that you've just seen. The proposed amendments are summarized in the following slides. First, the general plan will include the following amendments: Text revisions in Section 2.5 to clarify and include a reference to General Plan Background Report, Section 4.4, which includes detailed discussions on DDCs in unincorporated Ventura County. Amend Figure 2-6 to clearly identify the boundaries of the existing DDCs, remove and subtract boundaries, and include the additional DDCs identified by the board. And add new figures denoted as Figures 2-6A, B, and C to better depict the additional DDCs. In addition, the general plan background report will include the following amendments: Fix grammatical conventions in Section 4.4 for the use of acronyms and provide clarification for information compiled during the general plan update project. Amend Figure 4-13 to depict the correct boundaries of the existing DDCs and remove the planning area boundaries. Add a new subsection to Section 4.4, Designation of Additional Disadvantaged Communities Through General Plan Program LUQ, to provide context and supporting information for the additional DDCs. The new subsection will briefly summarize staff's research pursuant to Program LUQ and the board's direction to include additional DDCs in the general plan. Add new figures denoted as Figures 4-14, 4-14A, B, and C to the new subsection to depict additional DDCs. And add New Appendix 4A to the end of Chapter 4, which will include the study that staff previously presented to your commission and the board. Staff held a virtual public meeting in February for the proposed amendments. The meeting was conducted in English and Spanish, and the meeting recording and presentation are available online. Although staff did not receive any comments about the additional DDCs at the meeting, twenty comments were shared with staff related to topics such as grant funding opportunities and application processes, collaborations with community-based organizations, and examples of public services and infrastructure projects that could benefit DDCs, such as water-related projects that were funded through the Water Talks Grant Program. And responses to these comments are summarized in Exhibit 7. In addition, tribal consultation was conducted pursuant to Senate Bill 18, which mandates tribal consultation for general plan updates and amendments. Two tribes provided comments to which staff has responded. Communications with these two tribes are provided in Exhibit 6, which were related to ensuring protection of tribal cultural resources and providing clarifications on the project. Overall, the tribes did not have specific comments on the additional DDCs. The proposed amendments do not constitute a project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA for short, because the proposed amendments only identify additional DDCs by amending figures and text to depict the boundaries of such communities. Even if the amendments were considered a project, the amendments would be exempt under the common sense exemption because no direct or indirect physical change to the environment will occur, and the proposed amendments are intended to protect DDCs from further environmental pollutions. The additional DDCs would benefit from several policies and programs that specifically focus on increasing governmental support and resources for DDCs, protect them from further environmental pollution burdens, and enhance their quality of life. Some examples of those policies and programs are provided in the staff report. Thus, the proposed amendments are consistent with all applicable general plan goals, policies, and programs, and they are consistent with good planning practices and are in the interest of public health, safety, and general welfare. The meeting was duly noticed through the avenues listed on this slide. Notices were published in English and Spanish in newspapers, emails to stakeholders and interested parties, and mailed to properties within the vicinities of the additional DDCs. Staff has not received any comments from the public as of 3:30 yesterday. The recommended actions on this slide are found at the end of the staff report. Overall, staff requests that your commission make a recommendation to the board to adopt the proposed amendments as presented. This concludes my presentation. I will be available for questions as are Planning Manager Shelley Sussman and Planning Director Dave Ward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, my Commissioners? I will now open the public hearing. Secretary Luz, do we have any public comments or speakers?
Chair Garcia, I did not receive any speaker cards to people wanting to speak for this project.
Okay. Would staff, does staff have any additional remarks, closing remarks? Okay. I will now close the public hearing. Any discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended action.
Thank you. Commissioner McPhail, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Sandlin. Any final comments before the motion, before our vote? Thank you. Secretary Luz, please take a roll call.
Chair Garcia, I'm sorry. It seems like there are people that wanted to speak, but they did not sign in any speaker cards.
Okay.
Would you like to open the publication?
Sure. Can, how many, do we know how many speakers, Luz?
Are you basically?
Oh, there weren't. Sure. We'll take your comment. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alondra Mendoza with the Mixteco Indigenous Community Organizing Project. I am a health advocate, and I'm here to represent the disadvantaged communities that reside in Nylund Acres and El Rio. We are an agricultural working class and farmworkers. My parents live there. My siblings live there. I myself live there, and we lack, so we have community-facing housing inequities, lack of street lighting at night, and especially we lack lighting to intersections, so accidents may occur. We have bad road conditions. Our local parks need revitalization, especially after the pandemic. I have seen, I have noticed that a lot of vegetation is growing through cracks in the pavement for basketball courts, so my siblings can't go to the park anymore. We urge you to give greater access to the community and that an in-person community meeting be created in Spanish and to provide access to farmworkers and indigenous-speaking communities to get involved and give insights on this project. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Secretary Luz, are there any, did we miss any other public comments? We have some members in the audience.
Hello, everyone. My name is Juan Carlos Diaz. I also work with the Mixteco Indigenous Community Organizing Project. I come to say the same thing as my colleague here mentioned. We also live in Oxnard by Channel Islands or Lemongood. There's also a few farm fields. People are being, our community are being exposed to pesticides. And here also representing the Rio side, there's also people being, not getting the full service in their own language also. So we are here to ask if you would consider or disadvantaged communities. I think that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Just, so we did have a motion by Commissioner McPhail, seconded by Commissioner Sandlin. Any final comments on the motion before our vote?
Commissioner Garcia, I mean Chair Garcia, I'm so sorry. I think there is another gentleman over here that would like to speak. Please be reminded that we do have a speaker cards that you are supposed to peel out. It is kind of like when you come in.
Sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm a member of the agricultural community, longtime resident of Ventura County, and I also do a lot of work with the county. I have helped in the past with the, when we had the big fire, I helped the county with that. And I'm also someone who is very involved in the agricultural community. I just want to support the effort because I'm also working with the state of California on the farmworker housing project itself. I was on a teleconference call yesterday with one of the people from Oregon who is a member of this California association that is working on the final, final draft of getting ready to submit for the farmworker housing. We want to see that proposal, we want to support the proposal to provide the change in the, I don't know if it's the zoning or if it's something related to zoning because of Prop 13 where all of the ag land can only be developed if it's farmworker housing as well as agriculture. So if you're changing the zoning, so this could allow more farmworker housing. so this could allow more farmworker housing, which would be affordable housing for the people that pick our crops. We want to support that. I'm working with the state. I also work in, and they, I used to manage the biggest water district in Ventura County, United Water Conservation District. We need more water storage. If we could get one dam on Sesame Creek, we would not have an overdraft on our aquifers. There's three aquifers on the Oxnard Plain, the Fox Canyon, the Oxnard, and the shallow aquifer. So we, we are getting some of our water. City of Oxnard and some of the other domestic areas are getting imported water through Cuyegus, through the State Water Project. But we want to say, number one, we support your proposal. Number two, I'm working with the ag community and with the state to help get the funding we need for farmworker housing. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer. My name is Tim Thompson, and I ran out of business cards, but I'll make sure you have my information. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Secretary Luz, please take a roll call.
Commissioner Boydston?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandlin?
Yes.
Commissioner McPhail?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kessley?
Yes.
Chair Garcia?
Yes. The motion passes with five votes. The next item is item number seven, a report from Planning Director Ward on board actions and other matters. Good morning, Director Ward.
Good morning. Chair Garcia, commissioners. I do not have any reportable items from the board of supervisors. As far as looking ahead on your calendar, it's not appearing that we would have a June meeting for you, but July, we definitely will. So that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any items the Planning Commission may wish to introduce? Oh, Commissioner Boydston?
Just a question, Director Ward. If we have a July meeting, what, what are you anticipating that date might be?
July 18.
Thank you.
Are there any other items the Planning Commission may wish to introduce? Are there any other questions for staff? I did just have a follow-up staff on some of the public comments we received as far as our public meetings. Do we, what interpreting service do we provide for, for, for public meetings? What languages are available?
Chair Garcia, we do have interpretive services both for Spanish and Mixteco.
Okay, thank you. And is it typically, do we typically provide concurrent interpretive, interpretive service? Simultaneous? Or how do we typically handle that?
Yes, Chair Garcia, and we could, if you'd like, have the interpreters come up and describe part of their process.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted the clarification in light of the public comment that we received.
And, and we do, it depends on the projects that we're bringing forward to the commission on scheduling those types of interpretations.
Okay.
I'm just going to add a little bit to that. When we've had virtual meetings on Zoom, we have interpretive services that are concurrent, simultaneous. When we've been out into the community, what we have always done is have interpreters available on site. And often, our information is sort of spread out amongst, you know, in the room, and we have a Spanish and Mixteco speaker at each of our stations so that there is somebody there that can address questions and comments.
Okay, thank you. Just one additional follow-up question. When, when we do hold, like in the example of the outreach meetings for the item that we just discussed, do we hold meetings, are there preferred locations? Do we try to go to, out to the communities that are specifically, as in this example, El Rio, Nylund Acres? Do we go to that neighborhood? That's the subject of the item?
Yes, hi Chair Garcia. I could speak to the project that we just had a hearing on. For that particular project as an example, we did go directly as close as possible to the communities that we were conducting public outreach. So in Ventura, we held a Ventura in-person meeting there. We held one in Santa Paula as well, and we also had a virtual public meeting that also had interpretive services as well. And we tried our best to expand our outreach as much as possible. The El Rio area is already designated.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So, but we opened our public hearings, meetings, and outreach to the community as well. And we had an early connector, community connector meeting earlier on for the project, and the community connectors were stakeholders in all areas, including El Rio and Nylund Acres as well as part of that meeting. And they helped us strategize on community engagement techniques that might be helpful for our outreach for the project.
Okay, thanks for the additional clarification. I believe that's all we have for today, so I'll adjourn the meeting now. Thank you. Thanks.